Angels we have heard on high, sweetly singing o'er the plains. And the mountains in reply, echoing their joyous strains. Gloria in excelsis Deo. Gloria in excelsis Deo. Shepherds why this jubilee, why your joyous strains belong? What the glastome tidings be, which inspire your heavenly song? Gloria in excelsis Deo. Gloria in excelsis Deo. Come to Bethlehem and see, Christ over the angels sing. Come adore on bended knee, Christ the Lord, the newborn King. Gloria in excelsis Deo. Gloria in excelsis Deo. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know. Where the treetops glisten and children listen to hear sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know. Where the treetops glisten and children listen to hear sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, with every Christmas card I write. May your days be merry and bright, and may all your Christmases be white. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know. Where the treetops glisten and children listen to hear sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, with every Christmas card I write. May your days be merry and bright, and may all your Christmases be white. Christmases be white. Back the halls with bounds of holly, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. 'Tis the season to be jolly, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Don we now our gay apparel, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. To the ancient yuletide carol, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. See the blazing yule before us, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Follow me in merry measure, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. While I tell the yuletide treasure, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Pass away the old year passes, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Hail the new ye lads and lasses, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Sing we joyous songs together, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Heave us up the winds and weather, fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Silent night, holy night, all is calm, all is bright. Round young virgin mother and child, holy infant so tender and mild. Sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace. Silent night, holy night, shepherds quake at the sight. Glory streams from heaven afar, heavenly host sing hallelujah. Christ the Savior is born, Christ the Savior is born. Silent night, holy night, son of God, lost your light. Radiant things from thy holy face, with the toll of redeeming grace. Jesus, Lord of thy birth, Jesus, Lord of thy birth. Joy to the world, the Lord is come, let earth receive her King. Let every heart prepare him room, and heaven and nature sing, and heaven, heaven, nature sing. Joy to the world, the Savior reigns, let heaven's songs implore. Rocked hills and floods, rock'd hills and plain, repeat the sounding joys, repeat the sounding joys. Repeat, repeat the sounding joy. He rules the world with truth and grace, and makes the nations prove the glories of his righteousness, and wonders of his love, and wonders of his love, and wonders, wonders of his love. I have traveled many moonless nights, old and weary, with a babe inside. And I wonder what I've done. Holy Father, you have come, and chosen me now to carry your Son. I am waiting in a silent prayer. I am frightened by the Lord I bear, in a world as cold as stone. Must I walk this path alone? Be with me now, be with me now. Breath of Heaven, hold me together, be forever near me, breath of Heaven. Breath of Heaven, lighten my darkness, pour over me your holiness, for you are holy. Do you wonder, as you watch my face, if a wiser one should have had my place? But I offer all I am, for the mercy of your plan. Help me be strong, help me, help me. Breath of Heaven, hold me together, be forever near me, breath of Heaven. Breath of Heaven, lighten my darkness, pour over me your holiness, for you are holy. Hold me together, be forever near me, breath of Heaven. Breath of Heaven, lighten my darkness, pour over me your holiness, for you are holy. Hold me together, be forever near me, breath of Heaven. Breath of Heaven, lighten my darkness, pour over me your holiness, for you are holy. Joy to the world, the Savior reigns, let heaven's songs implore. Rocked hills and floods, rock'd hills and plain, repeat the sounding joys, repeat the sounding joys. Repeat, repeat the sounding joy. He rules the world with truth and grace, and makes the nations prove the glories of his righteousness, and wonders of his love, and wonders of his love, and wonders, wonders of his love. I have traveled many moonless nights, old and weary, with a babe inside. And I wonder what I've done. Holy Father, you have come, and chosen me now to carry your Son. I am waiting in a silent prayer. I am frightened by the Lord I bear, in a world as cold as stone. Must I walk this path alone? Be with me now, be with me now. Breath of Heaven, hold me together, be forever near me, breath of Heaven. Do you wonder, as you watch my face, if a wiser one should have had my place? But I offer all I am, for the mercy of your plan. Help me be strong, help me, help me. Breath of Heaven, hold me together, be forever near me, breath of Heaven. Breath of Heaven, lighten my darkness, pour over me your holiness, for you are holy. Breath of Heaven, hold me together, be forever near me, breath of Heaven. Breath of Heaven, lighten my darkness, pour over me your holiness, for you are holy. One seems to hear words that would cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how they bound, raising the sound, or hill and down, tallying the tail. Hilly, hilly, while people sing songs that would cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry is dawn, merry, 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 merry is dawn. On a day sent on with the wind, there's a joyful tune to everyone. On a day sent on with the wind, there's a joyful tune to everyone. One seems to hear words that would cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how they bound, raising the sound, or hill and down, tallying the tail. Hilly, hilly, while people sing songs that would cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry is dawn, merry, 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 merry is dawn. On a day sent on with the wind, there's a joyful tune to everyone. Ding dong, ding dong. And that was, yes, give them another hand, Temecula Valley High School Choir, outstanding. Thank you for those beautiful Alfred Burke carols. All right, we are calling this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. And again, Temecula Valley High School Choir, thank you very much. All right. We see lots of very proud parents making their way out. And I see Senator, new Senator Jeff Stone entering the room. He was standing in back listening, didn't want to interrupt the singing. Welcome. You can't sneak in here.
I noticed.
I noticed, that's right. All right, so we're going to move to our invocation. We have Reverend Robert Nagy of St. Thomas of Canterbury Episcopal Church. Good evening Reverend. And Mr. Nagar, are you going to give us our flag salute this evening? So we'll stand for invocation and flag salute.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, be with us now and bless us as we gather to do the work of the city council, of the city of Temecula, California. We give thanks for all the support that the people of this city have provided and continue to provide for the work of the city council. We praise your holy name for the time, talent, and treasure that all your people have returned to your greater glory. Time, talent, and treasure that have been used to bless you, the city of Temecula, and all of creation. The efforts and resources of the people of this city have supported and blessed many in need. The homeowner and the homeless, the well-resourced and the disadvantaged, and people, young, old, and in between. We give thanks for all the city officials here at this meeting. Please continue to encourage and strengthen them in their work. Almighty God, we ask your blessing on all those in this city as they go about the many and varied activities in their lives building up our community. Give them strength and courage to strive to use the gifts and talents that you have so generously bestowed upon them. O God, our Creator, Redeemer, and Sanctifier, in you every good work has its beginning. Grant that what was begun a quarter century ago may successfully continue for many years to come. May God give us light to guide us, courage to support us, and love to unite us now and evermore. Amen.
Thank you.
If you'd turn and face the flag with me and contemplate for just a moment and appreciate what it's like to live in liberty and say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Councilmember Nagar. You may be seated. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Camacharo?
Here.
Councilmember Nagar?
I'm here.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
I'm here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here. We have a special presentation this evening. You know, we enjoy music and the arts and presentation by dramatic groups and all kinds of things before our council meetings. And we have one person to thank for that, and that is Susan Miyamoto. And she was sitting at the piano just a few minutes ago. And she's about to sneak out the back door, but don't you dare leave because I have something special for you if you will meet me at the podium, please. Ms. Susan Miyamoto, let's give her a hand.
You can talk a little bit deeper, I'm going to...
You want me to talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
What do I know what to say? I thought that bouquet up here was for you. Oh, okay. Hi, Susan.
Susan is a very talented musician and teacher and community member in her own right. And so we have her to thank for all the musical presentations and really everything, the entertainment that we have before our council meetings, which is very important for all of our community members that come...
...and fifty thousand. Granted, these two cities are among those with higher median incomes. Their percentage of residents with high school diplomas has also been described as well above the national rate, contributing to more success later in life. Yet both cities are diversified in race, national origin, and religion. Our community's success, however, is not owed as much to who we are as much as to what we do. Most of our residents are church and synagogue-going in what has been called the Bible Belt of Southern California. Perhaps this explains our good city governments, which has helped provide budget surpluses, and the Christian project touch that has helped assist the areas needy. Within about a mile along the stretch of interstate highway connecting these two cities, one can see written upon a mound in Temecula the phrase "One Nation Under God." In Murrieta, one can see a cross next to an American flag upon a hill. Perhaps these items also help explain our safety rating. End of letter. The title of the letter had been given by The Washington Times. Considering that Christianity has been marginalized in various aspects of society today, a nation's capital newspaper or any newspaper giving the title to include God is not only astonishing but truly edifying. Comments in our area concerning this letter have been supportive. Alongside of the letter, I know of no one personally who has ever stated anything other than something positive about these two cities. While we as a community of Temecula are certainly not perfect, the overall results, as demonstrated in several news articles, would seem to indicate that we are, and I ad lib here, in our twenty-fifth anniversary undoubtedly exemplary. Thank you and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, the final speaker is Wayne Hall.
Mr. Hall, you gonna follow that?
I'll try. Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah, and remember the reason for the season. I'm a boy at heart. I'm over sixty, let's say. I have several children, grandchildren, and I still believe in Christmas wishes. And I will say it again, I'm a glutton for lost causes. I'm asking again for a Christmas wish, not this year, maybe not next year, but I could sure see an Olympic-sized pool down at the CRC where even the old people like me and maybe even my wife, who is an excellent swimmer and diver, I can see it. Now, people say, "Ah, you're blowing against the wind. It's not gonna happen. It's not cost-effective." Yeah, that's true. Twenty-five years ago, a lot of people thought, "Oh, you wanna become a city? Why? What for? It's a headache." I remember somebody telling me, "Why such a big building? Why such ornate?" And I thought, "Because this is Temecula, and sometimes when you dream and you wish and you work very hard, things do happen." Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Wayne. Thank you. And no further speakers. All right. I see people frantically pushing buttons up here. So I have three council members in the queue so far. Mr. Roberts? No? I noticed you didn't. All right, so we're on to City Council reports, and Mr. Niggar, you have beaten Mr. Washington.
That's quite unusual.
It is.
He's much younger.
Well, he is.
You're not ill or anything, are you?
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. I have three quick items.
All right.
If staff can put up the slides I requested. You know, this came across our desk the other day that Temecula Youth Basketball Association raised the money to actually do a new floor over at the CAC, and they did it in commemoration of our twenty-fifth anniversary. And I thought it's worthy to raise it up to our level and show everybody what they did. Simply astonishing. They paid for it with private funds, and that's just beautiful, what they did. And so I just wanted to, on behalf of the city, all my colleagues here, just thank TYBA, Excellent Youth Basketball Association League, been around for a long time, and a good, healthy activity for our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the people in the special needs community, if you've pulled up, rather, all of us, if you've pulled up earlier today, you see the ice skating rink outside. It's being assembled and frozen as we speak, and the special needs community will have a special time to ice skate. Check our city's website for when that time is. It's gonna be sponsored between the city and our Nicholas Foundation. Do we know?
We actually have a date. We can announce. It'll be Monday, December 22nd, from eight to nine-thirty. We'll also promote it through the city's website and our Nicholas Foundation as well.
Great. It'll be a time that's a little quieter, a little less chaotic, a little less busy for those who have special needs to come out and have some fun. And then lastly, Mr. Budney's reading the article about the safe cities is very timely. About a month ago, it was actually Mr. Budney who pointed out to me, the FBI had came out with their 2013 crime statistics and named Murrieta the second safest city and Temecula the sixth safest city based on violent crime in the nation. And since that time, a month has transpired, you know, police across the nation are coming under fire, whether appropriately or inappropriately, really doesn't matter to this council member. But I just wanted to say publicly, here in Temecula and in Temecula Valley with Murrieta included, the proof's in the pudding. We love you guys. We support you, police officers, what you do for our community and what it means to us. Again, is this community that we've enjoyed, parade, wonderful parade, which I'm sure we're gonna talk about here when we do community services. Where fifteen, twenty thousand people can come out and not one incident. Great job and thank you, police officers. Chief, make sure the team and the crew knows and pass it on to Murrieta as well. Thanks.
I lost my cue, so I think you are next, Mr. Washington.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanna join with the previous speakers in wishing everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. And I wanna compliment all of our staff for a wonderful, wonderful Christmas tree lighting Thursday last week and the parade on Friday. I know a lot of hands go into that. Mike mentioned our police officer, police officers and our PD did an outstanding job. I'm sure our firefighters were involved as well, many of the Public Works folks. For the first time, I got a chance to have my granddaughter riding the vehicle with me. It was a very special evening. I feel so blessed to be in this community and to be able to represent the folks of Temecula. So Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Comachero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very much the same sentiments for those of you who were at the parade Friday night and I guess for those of you who weren't as well. This was a change in the route from several years ago. It was kind of a combination of what we used to do along Jefferson and what we've currently done along, down in Old Town, down here. The reason was it just got too big, and we had to create more space, not so much for the floats, although it seemed like we had an enormous amount of people walking, scouts and high school bands and the like, but really to allow the spectators to have greater room to watch the parade from, especially with all the kids out there. So from what I could see, and you never know quite what happens behind the scenes where people pull their hair out, but Mr. Hawkins, job well done by you and your staff. And we'll probably get into it again. I think we're kinda moving into community services, but that's such a chore to put on that parade, and it just seemed to go out absolutely without a hitch. So beautiful job on that, and I'm sure next year we'll tweak it a little bit and it'll be even better. So good job. And also just a very, very happy holiday season for everybody. We don't meet again in December, the second Tuesday in December, or the fourth Tuesday in December gets awfully close to Christmas, so we only have one meeting in December, and this is it. So congratulations, you're here. But have a wonderful, wonderful holiday season, whatever it is you celebrate. Be thankful for everything you've got and be blessed as well. Take care.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you. Well, probably some of you know, this is my last meeting on the Temecula City Council.
I voted no.
I second.
How many meetings?
How many meetings? Two meetings a month, that's twenty-four meetings a year, times twenty-two years. That's a hundred and forty-eight times, nope, that's five-hundred-and-twenty-eight meetings total.
Wow.
Some interesting meetings during the time I've been mayor, which was five times. I know in the last event I rode in the parade, they were saying I was mayor four times, but it was really five times, but I wasn't counting at that time. But I have to trust what I was told. But it doesn't really, you know, on the meetings and how many times you were mayor. It's in the fun, and it seems like I always got interesting meetings every time it was my turn to be mayor. And that includes elephants.
Mm-hmm.
I think you'll all remember that. That was a long meeting, and that never came back for a review. It just disappeared, and I'm thinking...
I wonder why.
I think it was a five-o vote. You just don't ever bring it back. Some of the other things were, oh, over the years, we had a lot of interesting subjects. And I hate to bring this to an end because they're fun. They're fun meetings up here. I know you have fun watching us, but up here, I have fun watching you too. And I'm gonna miss that, but I can watch it from the audience from now on, or even watch it on television when it's that type of a day or a night where you're cold and I'll stay there. But I just wanted to thank everybody who's made this such an interesting twenty-two years for me. I've had an interesting life. First of all, working with the Highway Patrol for twenty-nine years, ending up actually as a sergeant right here, getting elected while I was still on the Highway Patrol. And that was interesting, being elected official and also writing a lot of tickets to people that deserved them.
Yeah.
And still getting elected.
Yeah, and still getting elected and having people look at me and say, "You know, I'm gonna go to the mayor because I don't think it's right that you're giving me a ticket." And I said, "Well, you don't have to go far. I'm right here." It was things like that, and it's been a fun time.
Wasn't there an Andy Griffith episode like that?
And last but not least, I see an old friend out in the audience, Jeff Stone, who we've kind of followed paths together. He went a little faster than I did. I got as far as this, and I don't know how far Jeff's gonna go, but I know he's gonna make a difference for not only this area but the whole state of California, and I hope the United States, to get us back where we need to get. Jeff has the right idea, and I'm gonna continue to follow that. And Jeff, thank you very much for the fun times that you and I have had through the years. So my last year, my last week, and thank you very much, my time is up.
No, it's not up.
I always do that. I'd like to introduce my wife, Jean. We've been married almost sixty years.
Wow. Stand up, Jean.
Okay, fifty-seven.
Stand up, stand up.
My granddaughter, Taryn, who has graduated from Northern Arizona University and now is a special ed teacher at a local school right here in Temecula.
Yay!
And my pride and joy, Ron Roberts, Jr.,
Yay!
who always watches me and tells me I'm talking too long, and I am, and my wife is saying the same thing, so that's all. Thank you.
I always refer to Mr. Roberts as our senior statesman because he has experience well beyond his years, and he comes across as rough and...
No.
Yeah, he does, and intimidating, and nothing could be further from the truth. I always say he's a big cuddly bear when you get to know him, and he has a heart as big as all outdoors, really, he does, and he is a very good mentor, and he has been one for me, even when I was, many years ago, when I was on the Traffic Commission, because he also came from the Traffic Commission, of course, and that makes sense, as a Highway Patrolman. So he has been a very good, you know, like a father figure and mentor to me on this council, and he has experience, and he's not gonna take time to tell you all the things he's done, but he has been the chairman of Southern Californian Association of Governments, he's been the president of MetroLink, he has spoken before United States Congress, he has done many, many things and brought, because of his experience and prestige, he has brought millions of dollars back to Temecula in the form of road improvements and things like that, just by his gravitas and the experience that he's had. So, Mr. Roberts, we're gonna miss you just because you've been a great colleague on this council, because of your experience and because of the patience that you have, and because you're really funny and fun to work with. I remember the first day that I served on the council, my first council meeting, and we were sitting having our first closed session, and Mr. Roberts came in a few minutes late, and we already, we were having dinner, because we work all afternoon and we work straight through dinner. So we eat dinner during closed session, and he was rushing in, I don't know where from, but probably some high-level meeting someplace, and he came in the room and staff got very quiet all of a sudden. When Mr. Roberts comes into the room, staff gets quiet. And he said, "I'm hungry, I'm grumpy, and I don't feel well," and this was my first meeting, and I turned around and I said, "So you're saying everything is normal then?" And it kind of, it broke the tension, and he immediately started laughing and sat down and had dinner. And, you know, he comes off like that, and then he sits down and he's just a big lovable fuzz bunny. So, Mr. Roberts, I am really going to miss you, but I couldn't talk you out of it this time, huh? No, I kind of was able to the last time, but this was it. So Jean, you got him. So good luck. I think they're gonna travel, and he's got some time, and he's still gonna be around, so at least we get to see you a little bit, right? All right, so that's all I have to say about that. One more quick thing. I had the privilege of being back in Washington, D.C. this past week on behalf of Riverside County and the region, Temecula Valley Unified School District, and on behalf of the city, a group of us were selected to, by President Obama, to represent the county and our region on the President's Council of the White House Summit on Education. And we had been selected earlier this year to sit in with the President and the Secretary of Education to set an agenda for the coming year, for projects, for goals, for other school districts. And Riverside County was targeted and selected because of the progress that we have made in several areas. So they asked us to highlight an area that we could share with other districts, an area of success that they could model, and the area that we chose was FAFSA, so that's Financial Aid, and having more students sign up for Financial Aid. So we targeted that area, and as soon as I came back from the original seminar, the city has been very proactive in working with the school district in helping students get ready for college. You know, we have our huge college fair, and we can thank Charles Walker and his team for that. We have, what, almost two hundred colleges that show up for that. The city has been very proactive in providing SAT prep for the SAT tests, and so now with this initiative, the city jumped on board again and increased our FAFSA seminars. So in doing that, we were selected again to participate in the actual White House Summit on Education. So I actually got to spend an entire day with President Obama and Michelle Obama and the Vice President of the United States, along with probably about three hundred other educators from across the country. And in doing so, the President had seen our proposal, he actually mentioned Riverside County and the name of our project, which was given that name by Charles Walker in his speech. And so we have the link, and I think we can probably post that link online and show you so you can see the name that was given to it by the City of Temecula online. So it was pretty cool to have him mention our project and the progress that we've made. So once again, we've been recognized for excellence in an area, and thank you to Charles Walker for working on that project, and to the city for supporting excellence in education, supporting our high school graduates as they go on to college. So great job again, team, and thank you to the school district for really doing a wonderful job on behalf of our students. So that's all I have to say. All right, so moving on, we're on to regular city business. I've got consent calendar. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll called vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure, number two, approve the action minutes of November 25th, 2014. Number three, approve the list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of October 31st, 2014. Number five, receive and file boards and commission handbook at the request of Mayor Edwards and Councilmember Niggar. Number six, approve the Second Amendment with Carl C. Green III DBA Old Town Tire and Service LLC for non-exclusive vehicle maintenance, repair, and tire services. Number seven, initiation of proceedings to reestablish the Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District under the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994. Number eight, approve the landscape maintenance agreements with Caltrans for the Interstate 15/State Route 79 South Ultimate Interchange, PW 04-08. Number nine, award a construction contract to All-American Asphalt for the pavement rehabilitation program at Rancho California Road, Jefferson Avenue to Inez Road, PW 10-12. Number ten, order a construction contract to California Averland Construction, Inc., for the Old Town Temecula Community Theater remediation, PW 12-04. Number eleven, approve the license agreement with Dennis G. Munyon and Patricia Munyon for use of the Oak Park Executive Suites parking lot in Old Town Temecula.
Move, consent.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Peter?
I just want to announce that Aaron Adams has not participated in item number seven, the initiation of the Visit Temecula Valley Business Improvement District. His wife is the executive director of Visit Temecula Valley, so he has not participated, but he doesn't need to leave the dais until, unless council member wishes to pull that item. Otherwise, he'll just stay here with the rest of us.
And I have no one asking for anything to be pulled, so I've got a motion and a second. Go ahead, and go ahead and cast your votes, please. And that item passes unanimously, and so we will adjourn the city council meeting to the Temecula Community Services District meeting.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. I call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, since this will be the last time we'll hear from Mr. Roberts, why don't we go ahead and take the roll?
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Niggar?
Here.
Director Roberts?
Here.
Director Washington?
I'm here.
Chair Comachero?
Here. Thank you. Do we have any public comment under this portion? Then we'll dispense with that portion. We have one item under consent calendar, that is consideration of approval of the action minutes of November 25th, 2014.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Washington, second by the mayor. Please cast your votes. We're waiting.
There it goes.
There it goes. There it goes. Motion does carry unanimously five-zero. Item thirteen under CSD Business is approval of the President and Vice President of the Temecula Community Services District for the calendar year 2015. And with the council's indulgence, I'd like to exercise the prerogative of the chair at this point and go ahead and make the motion that we appoint Councilmember Chuck Washington as President of TCSD for 2015.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, please cast your votes. And happily, that carries unanimously. Chuck, you got it back.
Thank you.
Chuck has been President of the District probably as many times as I have, and you've always done a great job, and I know you'll do a great job again.
Big shoes to fill.
Was that a little game? I say something nice about you, you say something nice about me, but thank you for the comment. And at this point, we'll entertain a motion to appoint somebody as the Vice President of the District.
I move Mayor Edwards.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Second.
A second by Mr. Washington. Any discussion? Oops, I pushed that I made the motion, so I guess I made the motion. Okay. With the votes cast, that looks like that is also approved on a five-zero vote, so congratulations, Mayor Edwards as well.
Oh, thank you.
Big agenda, that's it. Director Hawkins, what have you got for us tonight? Did we take all your thunder away already, or you have any more?
Nope. I hope they have a little thunder. Speaking of thunder, you know, as heavy rains are in the forecast for this Friday, a couple of special events adjustments have occurred. This Thursday, December 11th, Temecula on Ice returns to Town Square Park for a grand opening event, and that's gonna be at five o'clock, which includes the Mayor Skate, exhibition skating, and the much anticipated Bobby Races. Aaron?
Oh, man, no pressure.
Right. So dig out those mittens and scars as Temecula on Ice features a state-of-the-art outdoor ice rink, the best holiday ice skating music, comfortable rental skates, and of course, the Bobby Skating Aid. The rink will be open daily from 10:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. with extended hours on Friday and Saturday for teens and adults. For more information, visit Temecula on Ice on Facebook. Also next week marks the holiday break for most schools, so bring the kids and come out and enjoy a local holiday tradition. It's Penny Pickles' Winter Wonderland. As always, there will be plenty of fun and games and real snow to play in. Reminder that Winter Wonderland will be next Friday, not this Friday, December 19th, from five o'clock to eight-thirty p.m. For detailed event information, visit pennypickles.org. And also, since this is our last meeting of 2014, everyone is certainly invited to ring in 2015 Temecula Style at the annual grade drop with both an East Coast and a West Coast countdown. The celebration is from six o'clock p.m. to 1:30 a.m. here in the Civic Center Quad. That's going to include live bands, activities for kids, and of course, the ice rink, which will stay open until one o'clock a.m. on New Year's Eve. And finally, the special events team would like to express their heartfelt thanks to our fellow city employees, especially the staffs of Public Works and IT, along with the Temecula Police Department, the Old Town Temecula Association, and our wonderful residents for really making 2014 a stellar year for special events. You know, our team really enjoys celebrating with you and being a part of your family memories throughout the year. So thank all of you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Again, kudos to you and your department. It's been an action-packed 2014, an awful lot of events. I can't think of one that wasn't run beautifully, and it's been a pleasure to serve in the capacity as head of this year. So thank to you and all of your staff for a job, not just well-done, but beautifully done. Appreciate it. Mr. Adams, do you have anything further?
Only that I was gonna echo many of the comments and just a job well-done to TCSD staff, but all city staff, every department, every division, all year long, thank you. You did a fantastic job and look forward to 2015.
Thank you, Aaron, and include yourself in that comment as well. With that, do we have any further comments from any of the directors? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any objection?
Yep.
Besides Mr. Niggar? Seeing none, we stand adjourned.
All right, I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Senator Stone, I seem to remember that you can skate. Why don't you come and skate with me on Thursday? No? Are you sure? We'll give you those...
We'll give you those, like, trainer wheels that they have at the rink.
I wouldn't push it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, all right. Okay, so I'm gonna reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, moving on to city council business. We need to accept the declaration of the results in the November fourth, two thousand and fourteen general municipal election, so I'm going to throw that to the city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The general municipal election for the City of Temecula was held on November fourth, two thousand and fourteen. The election was held for the purpose of filling three full-term city council member seats. The election was conducted, the returns were canvassed, the results of the election have been certified. The following three individuals were elected to the office of council member, Jeff Comacheri, Mary Ann Edwards, and Matt Ron. The total number of registered voters for this election was forty-four thousand three hundred forty-one. There were eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-five ballots cast. Voter turnout was approximately forty-two percent. The detailed report with the precinct statistics is attached to the resolution proposed for adoption, and unless there are additional questions, staff asks that the city council adopt the resolution certifying the results of the November fourth, two thousand and fourteen election.
All right.
Move the staff report.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
I just have a question.
Okay, Mr. Nigar.
I'm just curious, what if we don't adopt it?
Well, I guess we all get to go home.
Just curiosity, if we don't...
He says, what happens if we don't adopt it?
Thinking about not adopting.
Well, we actually have an election code section that requires that the city council adopt the certified results at the first regularly scheduled meeting following the canvas.
But we can't make Mr. Roberts stay and Mr. Ron kick it in the back or anything like that.
We should probably follow the elections code.
It's hard to conduct council meetings in jail.
So, could, yeah, could the police chief...
Oh, there are so many lines I could say right now, but I'm just gonna resist the temptation.
Arrest him if he voted against it.
Gentlemen, let's just move on, shall we? Can I have a motion and a second? Did I have that? So you can cast our votes now, so let's just touch the screen and cast the votes and avoid any further comments, and thank you very much. We have a unanimous vote, so congratulations, everyone. All right, so...
And, Madam Mayor, now I'll ask that you and Councilmember Comacheri and Councilmember-Elect Ron join me at the podium for the administration of the oath of office.
Okay.
No comments from the peanut gallery.
Okay, sounds good.
The one whose head looks like a peanut.
Your last chance.
I'm gonna ask you to back up just a little bit.
You should have given you the...
At wherever you want us.
Just so the folks can...
We're gonna have to, like, get a stepstool or something.
So I will ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Mary Ann Edwards.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Captain? I think we may have a seat for you up there.
I think so.
At the next...
Oh, you don't get to go in there?
I know, run a few laps. Comacheri, you have no mental reservations?
No mental reservations.
Just making sure.
All right. Congratulations and, ah, take a deep breath.
Where's Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, Councilmember Ron, he's in the back, holding up the wall there. Okay, any departmental reports? No?
Madam Mayor, we need to go ahead and have item number fifteen appointment of Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, I guess we have, I can't skip over that, can I?
You just wanna stay mayor forever, don't you?
Oh, no, no, no. Number fifteen, this is important, appointment of Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem for calendar year two thousand and fifteen. Woo-hoo! Woo-hoo! All right. So, yeah, so we're gonna entertain motions for the position of Mayor effective January first to preside over the meetings...
I'll nominate.
Until the end of the calendar year two thousand and fifteen, and it is the mayor's prerogative...
I'll nominate Mr. Comacheri.
To make the motion, so I'm gonna nominate Mr. Comacheri, and I will take a second for that motion.
Good luck with that second.
Yeah. All right, so I have a motion and a second...
Roberts, see, I know who my friends are.
For Mr. Comacheri, so that was, that's good. So I have a motion and a second, and let's vote. Are you surprised, Mr. Comacheri?
Always surprised.
Yeah, uh-huh. Okay, so it is unanimous. Congratulations for two thousand and fifteen. It will be Mayor Comacheri, and this will be your fourth time? Oh, you look so young.
I'm not.
I know. All right.
But this job keeps you young. If I may, for a moment?
You may.
I just wanted to thank my colleagues, first off. It's always humbling, even though this will be my fourth term, and when you look around, we've got three terms, two terms, two terms, five terms. There's a lot of experience up on this council, but it never gets old, and it never stops being humbling. So I appreciate your confidence in me. I appreciate the confidence that our citizens have placed in us through the election process, and it's gonna be a great year in two thousand and fifteen. And, Madam Mayor, you've done a stellar job in two thousand and fourteen, and we all appreciate your efforts, going out on a high, and it's been a really, really, really good year in the city, so thank you for your efforts.
It has been a good year, and, you know, when you have a great team, it really does make it easy, and city staff is phenomenal. Temecula is gaining a reputation. When you can go to Washington DC and run into people who know about Temecula, and they're from South Carolina or Florida or other places, and they have really positive things to say when they've visited here, it really is an honor to serve in this city, and it's because of the residents. You have high standards, and you hold us accountable, and we love that, because we live here, too, and we want our city to continue to be the best place to live, work, play, and raise a family. So we owe it to our residents, so thank you very much, and thank you for you guys. It really is fun up here, and it's fun because we really like each other and we respect each other, and ditto for staff. We love the staff that we have, and I think it shows. So, thank you all, and it has been a really great year. So, you know, Mayor Pro Tem, now we need to move on. Entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, if I may, we've been blessed in this city that we don't suffer from political rancor very much, and so what happens, much, much, occasionally, but we get through it. And, oh, be quiet. You wanna fight?
We never do.
But, you know, one of the things that makes that pleasant up here, more than pleasant, is that, you know, there's just kind of a rotation, and the next in line just steps up and takes his or her rightful place, and so that falls to a very capable individual this year, and I'll be very proud to have you serve along with me, Mr. Chuck Washington. I'd like to nominate you for Mayor Pro Tem. I really would like to nominate Mr. Roberts, but I don't think that'll fly.
Thanks, but, no.
Second.
I second it.
Oh, did you second already?
I did, I did.
Okay.
You can have the second if you want.
Okay.
Chuck, who would you like to second it?
Well...
It's, oh, it's already done and gone. Okay, so go ahead and cast your vote.
I'll do a half a second.
You know, Mr. Comacheri, thank you for that. Before I vote, I wanna throw one more compliment out to our registered voters who go and vote. They make selection of Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, if I might toot my own horn, but I'm tooting all of our horns. They make it very easy to continue to support that path that we stay on, because they give us qualified people. They elect people that represent the best interests of the citizens. And so that, too, I think, has created the foundation that keeps that rancor out that other cities sometimes suffer from. Every one I've served with up here, I've enjoyed serving with, and I feel proud to call colleagues, and I know it will be no different when Matt Ron fills his seat. We'll miss Mr. Roberts' experience. We have a very qualified new council member coming in, and I think we'll just keep chugging away.
Yep.
And it's unanimous.
Congratulations, Mr. Washington.
Thank you.
So Temecula continues to move forward. All right, anything, Mr. City Manager?
Just a couple of quick items. I wanted to congratulate council members Comacheri and Edwards on reelection, as well as council member Matt Ron. Looking forward to working with him, joining the team. And I'd also like to thank Councilman Roberts for his leadership and support. Of your twenty-two years, I got to work with you almost twenty years, and so thank you for the support over those two decades. Also, we added a new member of our executive staff this week, our new fire division chief, Curtis Brown, and he was here earlier. I believe he was called, had to leave on a call, so maybe in January, we can introduce him to the community at a future meeting, but glad to have him here as well, and for the community and those in attendance. We have a little reception out there, so as soon as this meeting's over, we'll enjoy. Happy holidays.
Peter, anything?
I have nothing to report, other than to wish Mr. Roberts all the best in his retirement.
All right, and so I will accept, Mr. Comacheri, you wanted to say something?
I think it's only fitting tonight that we adjourn in honor of Mr. Roberts and his beautiful family sitting up front. Thank you for allowing us to have him for twenty-two years, and with that, I move adjournment.
All right. Motion and a second to adjourn.
I'll second it, and also, we should let them know that we're gonna have him come back in January for a very special and more formal recognition of all of his contributions.